To present. To be present in this territory. I've only read it a thousand times. The adoption of the agenda, please, clerk.
We have resolved with the agenda for the special meeting of council dated Wednesday, December 7th, 2022 to be adopted.
Move on to second, please. Counselor Grissom, Counselor Toner, all in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, no. Delegations and presentations. Clerk, are you going to introduce them or will this call them forward?
Yeah, we'll start us off just, just a little introduction as council knows this is our first budget meeting for the 2023 budget. It's our annual budget consultation session where we invite groups from the public and members of the public to come forward if they have any major funding asks for the 2023 period. So we'll have presentations as outlined on your agenda tonight and council is free to ask any questions that they may have of the members. But just a reminder that we're not making any decisions tonight. We're just here to, to listen and get informed. So we'll start off this evening with the Arnpryor Public Library. Karen, Josie Scott is joining us and look, I should probably. Just turn it on if you want and go through. It's a decent version. So there.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council for inviting us and we're, it's always a pleasure to present what we have been doing and what we hope to do in the near. So I'm Karen and this is Josie, our current board chair. And we'd like to start off by saying for being. We're focused. And we're in focus. The incoming board will be creating a strategic plan. Our current strategic plan kind of expired in the middle of the pandemic. So there wasn't much point in creating a new path to the library. But we're also currently in renovations and they're in full swing. So that will allow us between the new strategic plan and our new spaces, we envision it to return to full programming and work on our partnerships even a little more to make stronger community ties to create the library as that true community club. We've been very, very busy. Population growth has been amazing and you can see on this chart so far this year. We have just shy of 1,100 new members who have come to the library. These are new people in town and they're people who have rediscovered the library since the pandemic. You can see the trend there. The highest we ever had previously was 600 and change. So we're nearly double and, and that speaks to how busy we are in the library. This past summer, we had a record, actually that's from Miss Print, is 355 area children who registered for our TV summer reading club. That's 40% increase over the highest number in previous years. Our children's programming is supported by the Star Family Charitable Trust. They allow us not only to do the programming, but we also offer nutrition breaks for all the children for each program that they come to. We have special guests, entertainment. This past summer, we did a virtual coding camp with a company out of Ottawa, sorry, Toronto. And we partnered with other libraries in doing that one as well. We did indigenous programs, multicultural events. And our age range for children's programming goes from preschoolers all the way up to high school. Our circulation statistics and please to report were back to pre-pandemic levels. We're anticipating 139,000 and change in terms of circulation so far this year. And our previous high was 2019. It's a trend that some libraries are seeing, others are just recuperating out of that COVID downturn. But we've also experienced record numbers for interlibrary loan requests and homebound delivery clients. We average just shy of 30 people at any given time that we select books for and do an exchange and drop them off to them. We work on our partnerships throughout 2022. We strengthen these connections through all sorts of cultural events as well as passive type of programming. So that we coordinated and English as a second language for newcomers. It looks like a little mini UN downstairs on a Friday morning. We have people from Chile and Nicaragua, Ukraine. They're all learning English with qualified teachers. We have two seniors book clubs that we're doing in partnership with the Seniors Active Living Center. There's been requests to do more book clubs in the evening for adults. We've recently done a major fundraising campaign to bring in support for ADHS students who are in need. We've applied for a community bridge project. I'm not sure if that's going ahead. There's some funding timelines that aren't really meeting up. And we have provided thousands of rapid tests for COVID and masks as well through the Canadian Red Cross. So one of our greatest partnerships is our donors. People drop money into the fishbowl because they pick up a cute little button that we've made or, or a nice bookmark, especially now at Christmas time. The adoptive program usually brings in about $2,000 to augment our book acquisitions. We have generous support from service clubs. Who, the Rotary and the Optimists have always been supported and donated for our summer programs. So that assists in there. As a registered charity, we do give out charitable tax receipts. And a lot of those are targeted into areas that they would like to see that money spent. Again, the Star Family Charitable Trust has been very generous. We have a memorandum of understanding that actually is expiring in 2023. They've been giving us money to go toward the capital investment at the library as well as the support for children's programs. So that we can offer everything free of charge like most libraries do in Ontario. This year, we received some wonderful news that we were in receipt of an estate request. Some of those monies have come through in a first installment this year. The board has decided that they would like to use some of those monies for capital investments. So we're, all of our shelves on our upper level will be mobile, which allows us to do a lot of flexibility in terms of programming and fundraising and that sort of thing. Again, the strategic plan for 2023 will be paid out of that request. And then we hope to create things like reserves for technology because in five, 10 years' time, Lord knows what the rate, what the needs might be. A revamp of the community room is one of the things that the outgoing board looked at. And so the first installment has been done and we're expecting more monies to come in in the summer of 2023. So with thanks to the town for the capital investment and project management of our current renovations, federal grant, library reserves and development charges. We look like we're on track to have all that up and running, that new expansion place indoors and later on in the spring outdoors by April of next year. That will allow us to return to programming that kind of put us on the map. The space that we are adding to the library is, the footprint is very similar to what we currently have in the meeting room. So the community meeting room is where we used to do a lot of our artist in residence and children's programs and that sort of thing. We'll be able to augment that by having this outdoor space as well. Live music, film club evenings, author visits, open mics, music in residence, artists in residence. And of course, our major fundraisers like our galas for New Year's Eve and Mardi Gras. So these events balance our budget. They augment our local grants and our provincial grants. And they meet the needs of the library as our size and circulation. They put us on par with our neighboring libraries. I can provide you with some of those statistics, but for library, our size and our circulation, the annual operating budget is about $550,000 to $675,000. That's what it works out to throughout the area to render county and beyond. Josie's going to take over from here.
All right, Karen. Thank you. So Karen did the really, really nice part. She's got the feel-good part by telling everyone all the great things that we're doing at the library. I have the not so great part. I think picking up where Karen left off. It costs $550,000, $575,000 to operate a library the size of, for a community the size of Arnpryor. For, so the events and programs that Karen has discussed earlier provide a source of income for the library. Our partnerships harness the power in our town and they build community. And our programs serve the residents of Arnpryor by giving them opportunities to come together socially and with interest in the music events, the author visits, the open mics and so on. But these are our fundraising opportunities. And in past years, Arnpryor Library has thoroughly consistently self-generated as much as $65,000 annually. And this has made up the difference in our budget between what we are able to get in terms of our, in terms of our revenue and what our expenses are. I would like, I would like to say that our expenses are extravagant and wonderful things. In fact, our expenses are things like paying for the photocopier and the telephone and our insurance. You can see on the budget list that we submitted. So they're, they're operating costs. So we generate our own funds to pay for our operating costs. The stress of this has, has built in 2019, we approached council at both, both the town and the township. And we asked for and were approved for the addition of a full-time position for a program librarian to do programming and community outreach. That fell off by the pandemic. And so what, what the library board is asking tonight is we're requesting that that position be considered. And we're calling it at this point a pilot project so that we could hire someone. A third full-time staff member for the library for the months of April to December for 2023 to allow that person to do our, our fundraising, our, our programming. All the things that ultimately will, will fill the gap. What we, we, we looked at various ways to make, to make up the difference in this funding issue. And we thought, well, we could ask outright for the $40,000 to $60,000 to meet our operating costs. But we wondered if the best approach might be to have a hire for this third time, for this third full-time worker so that you've got for three quarters of the year to start with. So that we could not only look at our fundraising, but also look at our succession plan. Because right now, if Karen weren't to leave tomorrow, we would be in dire straits. So hiring someone in, we could start training that person and putting things in place for the future. Another thing that we are concerned about is with the memorandum of understanding with the charitable trust that our children's programming funding will be coming to a close within the next two or three years. And so we have to look at additional funding in order to be able to carry on our children's funding that right now, until now, has been free. Just to reiterate, the Arnpryor Public Library service has steadily increased. Our full-time staffing complement has not increased since the mid 1980s. Again, we can send you information that would show you that our library has, has two full-time staff members as opposed to three or four for other libraries of comparable size. While part-time staffing has filled the frontline service demands, all additional programming and technology support and community outreach and fundraising needs have been met by our two full-time employees. And the addition of a third time, a third full-time position would help us meet not only our financial needs, but our succession planning. And I think perhaps it might be important to look at what would happen to the library if you didn't have that third time person, full-time person. At this point, our budget holds the line on spending for acquisitions, operations and administrations. And the board-controlled reserves and donations augment our revenues for special projects. Karen has outlined some of them. Our special project for the new board, as soon as it is assigned by the town, will be to have a strategic planning event that we are using our reserves to cover. And I'm sorry, I'm losing my place. And if we didn't move forward with the funding, the only way that the library can save money is by cutting back on hours for part-time staff. So before COVID, we had 47 hours of library, public library access. Now we're operating at 36 hours and we find that people are using the library a little bit differently than they did before COVID. But we might have to cut back as far as 33 hours and use the money that we saved to cover our book acquisitions and our magazines. I'll stop there to say acquisitions. We would have to cut back on our community outreach. There, there would be no added program, programming. And we would have minimum partnerships. We'd certainly honor the partnerships that we have in place. But, but we wouldn't be able to expand in that area at all. As, as in past years, the sum total of municipal support covers payroll and some fixed costs including insurance, audit, photocopier contracts and so on. But it does not cover the full cost of running a library. We know how much it costs to run a fire hall. And unfortunately, we also know how much it costs to run a library. We're looking forward to showcasing the library in 2023 and, and showcasing the town because of the library and its resources and the spirit that is Arnpryor, that is certainly putting Arnpryor on the map. And we hope that you can consider this additional request that we have in our budget as we return to the same level of engagement that we experienced before COVID. Thank you very much. I guess it can end with, are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, once. Yes, thank you for the presentation. The last slide, you, you were, you were saying that you were going to have to cut back what the library currently offers. Is that, is that because your, the trust funding will be coming to an end and you, and you have to kind of shuffle around the money that you already have to cover some of the programming for the children?
Yes, part of that is, is I'd like to stop working 50 to 60 hours a week. Which has kind of been ongoing in order to support this, the kind of programming that we do do to raise money. Our adult programming usually clocked in at about $20,000 to $25,000 a year. But that would name weekends and evenings plus the planning so that I'm, right now, it sounds like a sob story, but right now I do the administration, the technology, the finances, the community outreach, the communications, the website, any of the electronic resources. That all falls in my lap because our part-time staff do frontline work. Interlibrary loans and that sort of thing. So they, they all are tasked with very specific library tasks during the hours that they are there. And our children's librarian focuses on children's programming. So everything else kind of falls under my, my wing, I guess, for lack of a better word. So we're hoping to be able to introduce additional staffing so that we can spread it out a little bit so that I'm not going to, you know, whatever.
Yeah. I, I think also to answer to your point about children's programming, even if the children's programming, the charitable trust could continue indefinitely, we would still have this $40,000 shortfall in terms of, of our funding and the costs entailed in running the library. Last year, we had the same situation and we had a surplus. So the 40,000 was covered by our surplus and we, we asked for no further funding other than what was, what was allocated. That's, that surplus didn't happen this year. And in the past, the surplus has been made up by fundraising.
I see. Yep.
Well, thanks for the presentation. Just have a couple of questions. First one is, are you still at this time handing out COVID tests or does that stop?
No, we're still having them out. I still, we fostered a partnership with the Red Cross. And so they continue to send us the COVID tests and the masks.
That's good to know because I don't think that's going away. The other, where you mentioned about the three hours in dollars, how much does that actually save you if you have to cut back just three hours?
Well, we would have, we'll, we'll have to do the, the number crunching on that, but if we have two or three staff, while they're there, they're not just serving the public, but they're also there doing the backend things like interlibrary loans and pulling books for homebound and that sort of thing. So if they're not there for serving the public, then they're also not doing those other tasks. So we're, we're thinking three people, three hours per week. I, I, as I say, I'm going to have to do that number crunching. Josie asked me today how many hours that means and I thought, I haven't done those calculations yet. So we'll.
Just, just curious how many dollars that represents. That's all.
Yeah. And, oh gosh, so.
If you don't know it, I'll tell you.
No, I don't know. Did you, I think three hours.
Just wondering about the position, the pilot project, the eight-month period for that, is that long enough to gather metrics to be able to say that it was success? It just seems like a short amount of time to really attract top talent, knowing that it's an eight-month contract. My concern be, I not get the best applicant for the job knowing it's so short. Why did you go with eight months from the pilot?
We went with eight months because we don't know when the budget will be approved. To say that we're going to hire somebody in January, that turnaround is very tight. Yes, that is a concern that we wouldn't be able to attract somebody who's looking for long-range, long-term employment. But we were just trying to dovetail it into what might be logistical, you know. Yeah.
But I'm sure the strategic plan, given the data you've given, that would be the hope that strategic plan would support that on a continuing basis.
If that individual isn't full-time, then maybe part-time on the assumption that that person could be full-time. The return on that placement falls.
Okay, but to maintain current service standards, you really would need that third person to, to keep growing. And it looks like you've got some very aggressive plans in the future that would really compromise that if you didn't have your third full-time employee.
Or if we didn't have the money. But we, we, we could just ask for the money. But, but we're thinking asking for a, a third employee works into a whole bunch of things in terms of moving forward, bigger picture. So, so maybe next year we wouldn't be back, be back, you're doing the same presentation again.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. With the addition of a new space, will you have more revenue from more events? It can be bigger and better.
Yes, I mean, that new space allows us to open up the entire library, the top floors. So in terms of, of major galas and that sort of thing, absolutely. But then we need the people to organize it. These things just don't happen quickly, but. So the mobile shelving that we are getting in December with the first installment of this request money will allow us to have a space that could accommodate 200 people. You know, fundraising event for 200 people, that will bring in a lot more money than the events that we've had in the past. Our goal is to do things like artists in residence and musicians in residence and, and writers in residence. And that will all generate money. That's the whole reason we wanted that extra programming space so that we have a community room for community groups of children's programs. And then we can do things every day virtually in that new space.
Just to comment, if the position is approved, then the next year, that increase will be part of the permanent budget, correct?
Yes.
Last question is, will you make this presentation to McNabb Brayside as well?
We've asked our trustee to talk to McNabb Brayside. So right now, that, that $37,000 increase is sitting in the town of Arnpryor's grant increase because we haven't made the presentation to McNabb yet and we haven't received any information from our trust or the McNabb trustee who sits on the library board. He was going to gather that information, but we haven't received anything back yet. So we had to park that money somewhere. And we didn't want to be presumptuous by carting it into McNabb Brayside's budget line on our budget without having a definitive.
Thank you. No other questions?
Well, thanks Karen, Josie, for your excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the Arnpryor McNabb Archives.
Decision.
Fifty, yes. Is it better in the box or in a one-sided box?
We'll see. We'll see.
I think I need you to start the slideshow, do I not?
Brian, I think you'll be able to start it if you press the little arrow button.
I think we've got it. There we go. Sorry about that, which I think I've mastered this machine now, I hope. Thank you very much for having us and hearing us out again this evening. We've got a lot to thank Arnpryor for. We're thirty years old. You have been supporting us those entire thirty years. You've been depositing records. You've been providing operating grants and you've been participating very actively and effectively in our board. And I'd just like to say that how much of an impact Counselor Strike had when he was your representative on our board? It was a really, really valuable member of the board and I look forward to someone who will do even better, I hope. Anyhow, we've come a fair ways in those thirty years. We're tiny compared to the library, but we are professionally led. We succeed in getting a fair number of significant project grants. We've won awards as an archives. We've got a very effective team of volunteers who have essentially all returned since the pandemic. We deal with hundreds of serious research inquiries that require an extensive response every year. Those come, some of them in person, some of them by email or phone. But we also have a much more globally and locally accessible face to our operations. We get a lot of web use. That thirty-five thousand number is eighty percent Canadian. If we had a lot more money, we could buy better data, it would tell us exactly where they're from. But we've got to make do with their eighty percent Canadian, about ten percent American. And we seem to have developed a bit of a following in China. We're active on Facebook and in fact, our Facebook activity has taken off this year. Our number of followers is up about twenty-five percent. We also get an awful lot of Facebook mentions. And I think a lot of that has to do with new material that we've made available on the web in the past year. We're still on Twitter. We'll be on Twitter as long as there's a Twitter to be on, we expect, because it is a good way of getting our message out to mainstream media. We also have a presence on Instagram, about which, to be honest, I know nothing. But I also know that one posting can be created and with three clicks, posted to all three of those social media platforms. So if it's good, it's good. And we also have a website blog. Things were tough a couple of years ago and some of you I know have heard our kind of cry of anguish at the worst of things in twenty-twenty-one. Because for a long time, we had been able to fund, thanks to you and McNabb Brayside, three days a week of archivist time. Over time, because of the change in the way archives work, because of digitization and so on, the professional demands as opposed to the things that can be done by volunteers have sort of continued to go up. And so the archivist was falling farther and farther behind. And in a situation where they could neither make a living nor get any job satisfaction, we bled archivists for over a year. We lost two excellent archivists quite soon. So we went out and recruited yet another archivist and spent a fair amount of time analyzing what had changed and why the twenty-one hours wasn't workable anymore. And we presented a lot of that to council last year and if anybody wants to see last year's presentation, just let me know. But we came to the councils and said, we've got to get at least four days a week of archivist time. In a perfect world, we'd like five. And you listened. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and many thanks. We came to both councils and said, look, here's what four days a week will cost. Here's what five days a week would cost. McNabb Brayside, and our official ask was for the four days, just to be clear. McNabb Brayside gave us what we had asked for. Arnpryor Council did a truly wonderful thing. And considering the case that we had made, said that Arnpryor was prepared to go halfway toward the five days, not conditional on anything that McNabb Brayside did, but just to get the hours up. So we've been operating this year with thirty-two hours a week of professional archivist service. And that seems to be kind of the sweet spot. That money that lets that happen comes mostly from Arnpryor and Brayside McNabb. In a year when we don't get a summer job grant from the federal government, basically Arnpryor gives us fifty-one percent of our budget. McNabb Brayside gives us forty-one percent and everything else accounts for eight percent of our budget. This year, we got a summer job grant from the federal government. So that's pushed the two percentages for the municipalities down. But in essence, we are the creature of the two municipalities. There's no kind of other way to look at it. In twenty-twenty-two, we didn't intend to do this, but we recruited a new archivist again because the one that had come back when we were in the crisis got poached by the University of Ottawa, who offered money that we couldn't imagine asking you to help us match. But with the increase in hours, we were able to attract back Emma Carey, who hadn't been our archivist in the past and who has been delighted to be working with us again. This year, we put forty years' worth of Arnpryor newspapers online on our website. That's been a huge success. It accounts, I think, for about eighty percent of the content on the Facebook group Arnpryor then. And it's astonishing. If nothing else, I have probably learned more about the number of gas stations that there used to be in Arnpryor. It's astounding. But I didn't live here when the highway bypass hadn't been built, so I have no real idea. Anyway, this year, we celebrated a couple of important people in our own history. One of them was Peter Hassel, who was the driving force really behind the formation of the Archives, the guy who wrote the history of McNabb. Peter died in twenty-twenty because of COVID and so on. Even though we wanted very much to commemorate him in some way, we weren't able to have an event until this summer. But we did. We dedicated the reading room at the Archives to Peter's memory. Both mayors came and very nice things to say. We very much appreciated their participation in the event. We also wanted to draw attention to Arnold McIntyre, legendary ADHS teacher, but also legendary Archives volunteer. For twenty-five years, Arnold basically drove the creation and the compilation of our birth, marriage, and death indexes. And so we were all extremely pleased that we were able to attend the ceremony where Arnold got his Volunteer of the Year award this past year. We also got a great young guy this year. We did very well out of Canada summer jobs. It often doesn't work for us because we need somebody in a college program who knows about heritage and history. And we often can only get funding for a fairly short job, not attractive to someone who has to make, you know, ends meet out of their summer employment. This year, we lucked out. We got a young fellow from the Museum Studies Program at Elbonne Point, Mark Alexander Webb. He was a great, great help to Emma. We've cut our backlog quite considerably, in part due to Mark's presence this summer. Thousand more images online. Emma's been able to get on with processing incoming material in a way that she hasn't been able to in the past. And we have a library board. You've got to follow us on this one. We've got our strategic plan renewed for another five years. But now we have to devote the board's energy to complying with the new Ontario Nonprofit Corporations Act. So we're going to be spending a lot of time on archives. Anyway, twenty-twenty-three, what we're looking for is stability, steady as she goes. We found that thirty-two hours a week works well for Emma in terms of work-life balance. And she's happy with that. We'd still like to get up to the thirty-five hours a week in archivist time. And last night, when I made my presentation to McNabb Brayside Council, I kind of braced with them the idea that maybe by their McNabb two hundred, they could get to that point. And we'll see what happens. But this year, because of the change in archivists and so on, we accrued a bit of a surplus because we had a bit of a deficit in archivist hours. And that's going to be very handy for us going forward because twenty-twenty-three is the year that the other shoe drops from the extension of archivist hours. At twenty-one hours a week, the archivist doesn't earn more than thirty thousand a year and doesn't have to charge us HST. As soon as we got over about twenty-four hours a week, Emma the archivist also becomes Emma the tax collector. And so we are now faced with paying HST on that. It's almost six thousand dollars that the HST hit this year that we hadn't had before. Fortunately, we're able to roll that surplus over to cut back that quite a bit. And then in twenty-twenty-four and thereafter, rebates on the previous year's GST because we get two-thirds of it back. We'll cover that. But twenty-twenty-three is kind of the hump year. And there are a few other pressures, but mostly it's that top line there. The almost six thousand dollars in HST that we have to pay. We haven't raised the archivist fee rate since twenty-nineteen. We're proposing a very small increase there. We don't have directors and officers insurance. And we're getting advised by a lot of organizations that we're members of that we really ought to be doing that. We're looking into it. We've got a preliminary quote. We'll see what we do. But if we don't spend it on that, it's not like we'll spend it on something else. We're basically holding the line budgetarily wherever we can. Kenwood storage is going to go up. Web posting is going to go up by an amount we don't know. Telephone and internet go up. It seems a little bit every eight months or so more recently. So in rounded terms, we're looking at nine thousand dollars in increased expenses this year. We've got three thousand to apply to that from the surplus. So we're looking for an additional six thousand dollars from, guess who, the municipalities. That money will go almost entirely simply to paying people who live and work in the community. That the blue is the archivist, the orange is our administrative assistant, and that the rest, all the other expenses are in the smallest thing. And even the Kenwood storage is a local expenditure. So that's what we need. We're asking you to cover half of the increase to bring your grant up to thirty-five. We asked McNabb last night to increase by three thousand as well. But included in the package is that more detailed budget that I'm happy to answer questions on if you have any. There are a couple of non-budget things. One of them is, as I said at the beginning, we really look forward to having a counselor participate in our board and participate actively. We always encourage more links from the town website to ours. So whenever you're looking at any redos on the website, do think of us. We're working already a bit on getting ready for the seamless transfer of electronic records. And we will eventually get around to wearing and icing ourselves a thirtieth birthday party for two. And we would very much like you to participate with us in that. And that basically is my presentation and I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions, Brian? All good?
All good, thank you.
Next up, we have the Physicians Recruitment Committee. The Library is here to speak.
Members of council, Mayor, thank you very much for providing me with the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The Physician Recruitment Committee. What are we? We are a committee that is a collaborative effort between community members, the town of Arnpryor, township of McNabb Brayside, Arnpryor Regional Health, and the Arnpryor Family Health Team. Our mandate, what is to ensure that every local resident has access to a local family physician. We are made up of myself, the chair, Karen Breslau, Sharon Hike, Robert Dodge, Ron Demers. They're all community members. Lee Lebec, the president and CEO of the hospital. Karen Simpson, the executive director of the Arnpryor District Family Health Team. Dr. Diego Garcia, the lead physician of the Arnpryor District Family Health Organization. Counselor Scott Brum from the Township of McNabb Brayside and the Arnpryor Economic Development Officer. So I make this a very similar presentation to McNabb Brayside. And incidentally, we accidentally inserted the wrong slide here. So I would like to say thank you to the town of Arnpryor as well for their generous support through the years. You have supported us since two thousand and five with major financial support since two thousand and eleven. The success of the Physician Recruitment Committee would not be possible without your support. A huge thanks to Erin Cole and Lindsay Wilson for their ongoing support as members of the committee. And I'd like to recognize the Economic Development Officer position for providing support for our events. Student Week organization, student attending the student and resident lunches, helping to sell our community to prospective physicians and attending all our meetings. So why do we need a Physician Recruitment Committee? So recruiting physicians is a community responsibility. Although healthcare is a provincial responsibility, it is a community's responsibility to find and retain physicians. It is not the responsibility of the hospital or our current family physicians. We have a greater success in recruiting when many community stakeholders take part, which includes physicians, residents, businesses, the municipality, and the hospital. Visibility is extremely important, now more than ever, where many communities are seeking physicians. Recruitment is a long-term strategy and physician recruitment has a long recruitment cycle. It usually takes two to three years to find a suitable physician. We are a growing community and our needs will only increase. We need to ensure that local care needs will continue to be met and that residents will have increased access to family, to prior care and in our coverage. We need to support the new physicians that we recruit. For a physician moving to Arnpryor, the community needs to make sure that they For a physician moving to Armprar, the community needs to make sure that they are comfortable and they have what they need to be successful. And finally, we need a physician recruitment committee to retain our existing physicians. We need to make sure our existing physicians feel valuable, valued for the work they do and the sacrifices that they make. So what have been our past successes? Since two thousand and eleven, we have successfully recruited twelve new physicians to Armprar. We've replaced four retiring physicians. Since two thousand and sixteen, the family health team had a combined roster size of twelve thousand people. Currently, the roster size is over fifteen thousand patients. This is a twenty-five percent increase. And the Physician Recruitment Committee has helped keep our community healthy by attracting physicians and minimizing the number of people without a family doctor. Since two thousand and sixteen, when the waitlist was created, there had been over six thousand people who have found a family physician in Armprar. The renovations in Suite one fifty-seven and in, in two thousand and sixteen and the Tall Clines Clinic uh, in the new Grove in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, have helped us attract additional physicians to Armprar. And we have raised over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in community support since two thousand and eleven. Our last recruitment successes with physicians have been Dr. Megan Fenn and Dr. Samantha Kremer. Uh, they are both graduates of Ottawa Medical School and they're both, uh, from the Ottawa Valley. And that's what we have found has been the greatest attraction, uh, greatest asset in attract, in attracting physicians here. People that are familiar with the area or are from a small town or have a similar background. PRC provides financial support in the form of relocation support, startup costs, including moving costs, office setup, office supplies, and business setup. We do not provide cash to physicians for them to locate in Armprar. We provide them with support such as medical equipment or for help setting up their business so that they can get to the work of practicing medicine rather than worrying about how, uh, they can set up their office. So what are our challenges? As many of you know, if you read the news, healthcare sector is extremely fatigued during the pandemic. Doctors are now considering retiring earlier. They're reducing their practice size. They're not increasing their practice size. Um, and they're adjusting the work-life balance during the pandemic and so, and, uh, this past year, there had, we've had fewer medical students doing rotations in Armprar. And rotations are our main way of recruiting newly graduated physicians. There have been fewer career fairs and it's harder to engage students in an online forum. We have had fundraising challenges. Uh, we couldn't, our main fundraising event is the Doctor's Dining Duel. We have not had that in the past two years and we have pushed it to next year, to June. Our biggest challenge now is we, our waitlist is now three thousand people. Last year it was fifty, it was half of that. So we are a growing community, which is great, but this impact has been fifteen hundred people more on the waitlist. And we just see this increasing because, uh, Armprar is a growing community. Another very large, uh, challenge for us is the lack of a suitable physician space. Newly trained physicians, uh, operate in a group practice with other physicians. Uh, established physicians who are considering moving their practices prefer to practice in a group practice. Many are physicians who potentially, who could potentially retire over the next few years. Many of them have standalone practices and it's challenging to recruit new physicians into that space. Currently, ARH has no vacant space for physicians and the new space that is created as part of the Grove redevelopment is full. Uh, we have a, recruiting physicians, as I've mentioned, is a very long recruitment cycle. It takes two to three years from the time that we make contact with someone to when they actually begin work. And lastly, retiring physicians have large practices. New physicians are looking for work-life balance where they see fewer patients work less time than their archetypes of many years ago. In addition, the administrative burden has increased over time, allowing for pay, for physicians to see less patients. Many physicians who are, uh, getting close to retirement have large practices that would require two physicians to replace them. This means we will need to work even harder at recruiting multiple physicians to replace one physician who retires. Our current physician need, the family health team waitlist, as I mentioned, has three thousand people. This is approximately three or four physicians. We anticipate that we will have three retirements over the next five years. That brings, this translates to a minimum of six additional physicians that the community will need. There are no official retirements at the moment, but with a long recruiting cycle, we will need to continue our efforts in order to, um, ensure we have a smooth transition between those for patients whose physician is retiring. We remain an underserved area, Armprar and the rest of Redford County. It has been designated by the Ministry of Health as an underserved area with the need for additional physicians greater as you go up the alley. And there are new developments in both Armprar and McNabb Race Side. So our, we expect in the future that our needs will only increase. What have been our recruitment activities? What do we do to retain, to recruit and entertain physicians? We make, we retain, we maintain relationships with medical schools and student placement agencies. To ensure that the flow of students and residents come to Armprar and, uh, we can glean potential candidates for physicians that way. We hold resident lunches where we have an opportunity for committee members to speak to the physicians and see what, one-on-one, to see what their plans are for current practices, get to know the physician and see what they're looking for and if they will meet the needs of our community and if we are a suitable community for them. We host Student Week each year where new medical students, uh, come and we show them what it's like to practice in a rural community. We attend career fairs such as the, at the University of Ottawa, which was held, uh, just a few weeks ago and also at Queens. And we continue our efforts to recruit physicians for the anticipated retirements. We coordinate our annual Doctor's Dining Duel and craft shows to raise funds. We continue to show our appreciation to our existing physicians. And as mentioned, we are planning for new, new, uh, group space. We're looking at the future for additional group space to attract new physicians and offer the best possible space for healthcare in our community. Our twenty twenty-two recruitment activities, we saw nine residents complete rotations with local physicians. This, uh, but the pandemic continues to affect our main recruitment efforts. Uh, in the past, we have seen the number of residents through have been around twenty, but it's, it's still an increase over last year. We had two students during, uh, Student Week again in the past, we usually had six. Um, we celebrated Doctor's Day in May. Uh, we had, we hung banners at the hospital and in the primary care center and, uh, offered snacks and treats to the physicians in the, from the hospital cafeteria. And for Doctor Appreciation in November, again, we hung banners. Uh, we had coloring book pages, uh, painted, posted, uh, that were painted, that were, uh, colored by local children. Uh, hung around the, uh, the primary care center. And we, uh, are providing a small gift from physician improvement to our doctors to thank them for their ongoing, uh, work in the community. So our funding is a combination of the generosity, uh, of the Township of McNabb Race Side and the town of Armprar. Uh, and our annual fundraising activities. We're currently in, currently on budget or under budget in all of our, uh, areas. Our financial goal for the Doctor's Dining Duel is to raise ten thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. Our budget for twenty twenty-three allows for the hiring of one additional physician. And our, uh, total budget is fifty thousand dollars. So this supports, uh, our Physician Recruitment Coordinator role, uh, which is held by Mayor Maltmore. I attend to, to, at three recruiting events, the continuation of student lunches, retention activities for current physicians to show them how much we value, value them and just, and to make sure that our recruitment efforts don't go to waste. Our request to the town of Armprar is for twenty thousand dollars. We will also be requesting the same from the Township of McNabb Race Side. And this twenty thousand dollar request has been the same since twenty sixteen. So what's next? What are we planning for the future? We are planning for our group physician space. We want to make sure that we have space that will serve our community over the next five, ten to fifteen years uh, as it relates to recruitment physician and keep, physician recruitment and keeping our community healthy. We will maintain our efforts to recruit physicians to reduce the waitlist and our, and the anticipated retirements. We'll continue our Doctor's Dining Duel, which is our main fundraiser and has been a hit with the community. We'll be attending career fairs, coordinating, uh, and continue to show our appreciation to, uh, our current physicians. Is there any other questions?
Questions? When it comes to the planning space, are you just finding, um, kind of connecting them with the actual space? And then it's up to the fit or whoever, how they decided to team up, um, to purchase, to outfit it, to do all that? How, how do you fit into that role?
Um, we help with, uh, bringing all, everyone together to, uh, explain the needs, explain what, uh, physicians are looking for, what new resident, what residents are looking for and how, uh, they like to practice. The, uh, hospital, uh, if we're in, uh, discussing with the hospital and the many partners that exist there, um, with re, redoing the space, uh, in the primary care center, uh, to allow for additional group space. So, uh, redesigning some of the, uh, spaces that have individual physicians in them and creating a group space similar to what's in one five seven or, uh, two five seven. Um, and, uh, that will allow, by starting there, that will allow us to, um, create new space within the hospital as physicians retire and create a cycle. Um, there will always be a new space for, uh, a physician. Uh, we have lost, uh, opportunities, uh, for physicians who have decided to go to other communities because we don't have, uh, space. Um, we recently had, recently had a physician, uh, who practiced in Armprar, uh, who was here as a resident and, uh, they declined, uh, practicing here because the space that was available to them, uh, would be available to them was, uh, single physician space and they wanted to practice in.
So it'd be reallocating the resources that are created at the hospital, not necessarily new building and.
Uh, no, not, not at this time. We're not planning that.
Okay. Where we go.
Mark, is there any hope of, uh, taking over more of the proper deal growth?
Uh, I can't speak to that directly, but I understand that, uh, the hospital has, uh, has already made some plans for that. And that's not, there is no opportunity for, uh, in the near future for that, um, for a physician.
And to put another rumor to rest, the Medical Center, the old liquor store.
Uh, that would be great, but I have, uh, have not heard anything about that. So I, I don't think that's going to happen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Very nice. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for keeping us.
Next, we have the Armprar Regional Health Foundation, Ben Gardner.
So first of all, thank you very much to the town of Armprar staff. Thank you to the counselors. Thank you to everybody who's here as guests. Um, my name is Ben Gardner and I'm the Executive Director of the Armprar Regional Health Foundation. So our primary purpose as a charity is to support the purchase of life-saving equipment for Armprar Regional Health. You may have seen, uh, in the news recently that we received approval for a CT scan at the Armprar Hospital. This is great news for the residents in Armprar. A CT scan involves X-ray images taken from different angles around your body and uses computer processing to create cross-sectional images or slices of bones, blood vessels, and soft tissues inside your body to create an image, a three D image, so that, you know, in a perfect world, a physician can better diagnose you and see it in a three dimension. So currently, if you come into the Armprar Hospital, whether you come into the emergency department or visit your family physician, the doctor or physician has an option to use an X-ray or an ultrasound. So these are both, you know, uh, great pieces of, of life-saving equipment to diagnose and, and better treat any illness that you have. But if they need something that's a little more precise and detailed, then they need to order a CT scan at either Rentford Victoria Hospital or Queensway Carlton Hospital. So this means that, you know, the patient or resident who's at the hospital needs to leave their community and go either travel themselves to another community, uh, community that they're not familiar with themselves or they need to be transported. So this involves, um, you know, a delay in diagnosis and treatment obviously takes them out of the environment that they're familiar with. It means that that patient, um, like I said, their, their diagnosis is delayed. The treatment is changed and care is, is changed altogether. Quite often, if they're transported, um, it involves a nurse to accompany them, which, you know, takes away from, uh, human resources at our hospital um, when we know that stocking shortages already exist. So this year, this slide here is a perfect example of this situation. So Joe Fabro was sick for more than a month. And after finally being admitted to Armprar Regional Health, his physicians ordered a CT scan at the Rentford Victoria Hospital. So based on the results of that CT scan, doctors determined that he had gallstones and treatment was therefore followed. Again, this was a lot of stress and expense and inconvenience for him and his family. His diagnosis was delayed, but ultimately he had a positive experience and outcome. And he's now at home, happy and healthy, but again, outside of his community that he was familiar with. So what's the impact on Armprar residents and patients? So when we have a CT scan in our prayer, three thousand people just like Jill who are currently referred out of town for a CT scan will have this test in our prayer. The stresses and expenses from travel will be eliminated. There will no longer be a delay, longer wait times or disruption in diagnosis. One thing that I, I personally didn't consider myself. Um, we recently, uh, had Dr. Morrison, a retired physician in our prayer, come and speak to our foundation's board of directors. She said that a CT scan is actually a perfect recruiting tool. Of course, we're, we're pretty lucky in the town of Armprar. We have some amazing physicians. Um, but as you know, Armprar is a growing community. Some of those physicians are retiring. A CT scan is a gold standard for doctors who are coming out of school right now. And this, you know, ideally we're, will persuade new physicians to start their practices in our prayer. In this slide right here, this is, uh, Dr. Floran Pattyannu, the Chief of Staff at Armprar Regional Health. In this slide right here, this is Dr. Floran Padianu, the chief of staff at our prior regional health. He's a huge advocate for the CT scan campaign and he knows. That a CT scanner will lead to a faster discharge. And provide physicians with the ability to continue quality care right here at home. In this slide, it captures the endorsement of Dr. Terrence Woods. So Dr. Woods is the emergency department chief. I really feel like he's the face of emergency medicine in our prior. He's a real rock star, in my opinion. He sees value in a CT scan because it keeps patients local. Where they're comfortable instead of taking them out of our community. So just to back up a little bit, a CT scan will give physicians the depth of information. To properly diagnose many conditions. And some of these conditions include. Certain types of cancer, benign tumors, fractures. Heart disease, blood clots. Bowel disorders such as Crohn's disease, brain and spinal cord diseases or injuries. Internal bleeding, kidney stones. This adds to the exemplary care that our prior regional health already provides and reinforces. Our commitment to a healthy and vibrant community. Again, just to reinforce the value of a CT scan right here in our prior. This will reduce wait times, decrease our hospital's financial burden. From referring patients elsewhere, it gives our hospital a greater ability to recruit new physicians, just speaking to the. Physician recruitment piece. All of this while enhancing healthcare for our prior residents. So it's planned in the first year of having a CT scan, like I said before, it will address. Three thousand people who come to the airport hospital, whether that's the emergency department or their family physicians. But it also adds three thousand people who are part of a backlog. Of people waiting for a CT scan, whether it's at the Rentford Victoria Hospital, Ottawa Hospitals, Queensway Carlton, etc. So six thousand people in total using a CT scan. So when is the CT scan coming? So we know that after a construction contract is awarded, the equipment will be installed. Renovated and operational within eighteen months. It will be located in an existing space in the diagnostic department at the Armed Prior Hospital. So knowing that information, our foundation shows a timeline to launch. A two-year, one point eight million dollar campaign to fully fund the project. With the help of our partners, local businesses and community members. We know that the town of our prior, your staff, your council have all been extremely supportive for many years. We wanted to respect. Your goal to enhance the town of our prior by coming to you and including you. We current, we're currently in the quiet phase of this campaign that began on December first. We've had quiet conversations with a couple partners so far and there really has been a consensus that. Everybody's excited for this campaign and having the CT scan in our prayer. We know that our prior regional health, our foundation and the town of our prior share the same vision. We're all working to enhance the quality of life of local residents. By delivering great healthcare and services for everyone. We would like to respectfully invite the town of our prior to join in the success of this campaign and invest two hundred thousand dollars over a four-year period. So that we can make sure that great healthcare stays right here in our prayer. Thank you so much for allowing me to share this great news and for your consideration.
Just for operation of this, do we have staff? Now that will operate it or is this additional training that they would have to take or whatever?
Yeah, so there will be additional training that is included in that one point eight million dollar campaign goal. We may have to hire staff to operate the CT scan or. To train the people that already exist in the diagnostic department, but it is included in that one point eight million dollar campaign goal.
Just you, you said, which question? You said it's really important for recruitment. Just how key would this be in supporting recruitment efforts? Like, how much would that help their?
I don't know if it's measurable. I feel like it's a great argument. For people who are considering being physicians in our prior, it's something they can add to their tool belt. You know, it's a great way to try and sell someone, you know, having the space like physician recruitment was saying before. But having the tools as well that they can use to make their job easier to diagnose and treat.
Okay, so my question really is, it's an expectation that communities have equipment like this to bring in that hot talent, like. Do they expect to have ready access to a CT scan?
Yeah, so I feel like all of the literature and research that I've, you know, seen previously. It is the gold standard, a CT scan, having it available in your hospital. Not having to refer someone to a different community to have those tests.
Oh, yeah, Ben. By getting a CT scan in the airport hospital, I mean, you said that the doctors or the physicians in town don't have to. Refer a patient, let's say, to Rentford Victoria Hospital. So would that do? Who pay, who pays for the patient, who pays for the use of the CT scan if we have to refer someone else? Think there's, does our position, does our hospital pay? How does that, or does that hospital, they just get the money from the government?
Yes, so they get the money. The difference is when we refer someone. If they need transport, we would pay for the transport. We would, you know, fund that nurse that needs to accompany them. That's HR taking away from our hospital as well. And. You know, with staffing shortages, you know, the way they are now, it's one person in the hospital that has to leave. Temporary.
Yeah, okay. I mean, not that it's like, not that you're not that we're always trying to. Getting a CT scan, it would be like a revenue generator also, right?
Yes, I mean, yeah, so it's important to note that the ministry will not be providing any funding. For operations, but it will generate revenue and there will be a slight surplus of revenue generated because of the CT scan. That's okay.
Any other questions? Just one, Ben, with the two hundred thousand that we're going to give on the one point eight, that leaves you a million and something. Can you express how we're going to get that kind of money under your? Draws, where's this money gonna come from?
Well, where's the two hundred thousand dollars?
If we give two hundred and it's worth one point eight, you're short one point six million.
Yes.
Where is that fundraising going to come from?
The additional one point six. Yeah, so we've already quietly spoken with some businesses, some local partners and community members in our prior. We have a lot of interest, a lot of people who have. Committed verbally. So we're on our way there. We haven't, by all means, haven't fundraised even verbal commitments. For that one point six million dollars, but we know that, you know, based on our previous campaign, the five million dollar campaign. For the Grove redevelopment, there's a lot of generous people in this community. There's a lot of very generous business, businesses, community-minded. Businesses. You know, it's just a matter of going and providing an opportunity for them to be recognized and thanked and give back in a meaningful way.
Thank you. I guess direction is with the money that may or may not come from the town, that's our taxpayer. And it's gonna be the same person that's gonna be part of your fundraising. Just to let them know there'll be double dipping per se, for sure. Andrew, much, any other questions? Thanks, Ben. I appreciate it.
Next is the airport commission.
I get in the south here, this will just give a brief introduction. John Constant, that's all people I go by Johnny. So I heard all my friends call me Johnny and I pray you guys do the same. I'm new to the position of chair of the airport commission. I've also taken on the role of manager of the airport right now. We had. Our current manager decided to leave and it was left with no choice but to kind of pick up the slack. So I'm kind of being the judge, jury and executioner. All in one swoop. However, I figured I was gonna start the presentation with a with a meme, if you can imagine. A married couple embracing the top reading, best moment of my life. With a plane flying by behind. And if you read the lower section, I'm in the plane. So I'm. I'm a passionate aviator, aviator. I'm a father of a four-year-old and a two-year-old and we're also local business owners. And we also live in the area. So we're all looking these kind of close to home. Just to kind of continue on here. Is this ready to rock and roll? So I figure you can't really talk about where. Where we're going, like the top of where we came from. So I'll try to make a brief, but it seems a lot of people don't quite understand what we have in our own backyard. So to discuss briefly, this is a. British Commonwealth training facility that started in nineteen forty-one. And in nineteen forty-two, it was a station our prior opened. It was a number three flight instructor school. At the time had a L C sixty-four aircraft, forty-six students and had staff to over eight hundred people. The instructor school closed in forty-four, having pushed out almost four hundred instructors. And then it took on some other roles. The airport took on other roles afterwards from forty-six to fifty-three. The NRC operated a flight research laboratory. They subsequently left and moved over to Ottawa because the runway length wasn't enough. Fifty-four to seventy-one, the Emergency Preparedness College was there. It's obviously gone as well. Boeing was was around now became our prior aerospace. And in seventy-two, the three. Armed Prior Rentford, Brayside, McNabb, they formed a commission to develop the South Run Free Municipal Airport. And then finally, in nineteen eighty-four, this commission was incorporated and it was sold for a dollar to the commission crown. Now, let's just speak briefly about who we are at the airport. We're passionate aviators, we're community members. We're volunteers and not only at the airport itself, we're often involved in a community and fundraising for various charities. And we're also fathers, we're mothers, we're parents, of course, with children and we're looking to get the community involved and things as well. This is on a little note, this presentation was made to have a bunch of moving parts which don't appear to be taking place in this current rendition. So if things kind of look a little bit odd. That's why. Moving on, we were not, we're not a bunch of rich guys that are, you know, with their toys, which often I feel is what's being portrayed about people at the airport. That's just their toys and we're out there playing with the toys, the big, 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 you know, sandbox, so to speak, for adults. No, we have, we know that, you know, there are. We live in a community, we respect the community, we don't have deep pockets to just run, you know, to run an airport. The guys often, believe it or not, their aircraft that cost way less than the cars that you guys drive. So this is not, you know, don't play. Paint us all with the same brushstrokes, saying that we're. Now, of course, there are people that have planes that have money like, but they're also. This is kind of how it started. The South Rentford Municipal Airport. Started with all three giving twenty-five thousand dollars a pop for a total of seventy-five thousand dollars. And eventually Rentford decided to leave. Then McNabb Brayside decided to leave and Arm Prior took over and gave sixty thousand dollars a year. Not quite the seventy-five that we had, that they started out with, but that's if you guys could come up. And of course, this has been going on for decades. What we've become today and what we contribute to our prior, we're currently forty-three private hangar lots and it's growing. They're currently some under construction. All units pay land taxes, including leased land and some are at commercial rates, so not only at the residential. All landowners do have a vote. I also voted with the vote from the, from my. Land ownership that I have in the airport, the. I considered a minimal municipal expense for the town of our prior because we don't really engage in any of the services that you guys offer, including fire, water. Sewage, road maintenance, stone removal, et cetera, et cetera. So it ends up being a net positive for the town of our prior. I like to talk a little bit about the kind of businesses that we do have running. We have a commercial lots that are available on the north side of the runway and one large contractor, at least that was signed with SSI Canada. Was, who is a large communications and energy company based in northern Canada. They work with indigenous communities and provide competitive and accessible internet and energy solutions. And they're interested in coming and have. Committed to coming to our prior to develop, working with First Nations communities via aviation training and education. I like to make kind of a disclaimer here, this is not their official position. They haven't come up and said, I did try to ask them before this presentation if they could give me a little bit more that we could work with here. But it ends up that I wasn't successful. We ended up speaking a little bit too late. So. We also have parachute Ottawa, which is a world-class parachuting facility. In terms of employment and when it brings, there's twenty plus employees that operate during the summer months. Of course, the winter months are a little bit quieter or in fact don't operate. Six are residents of our prior. In fact, that was just updated this evening to eight, two more have moved in. This year alone, twenty twenty-two, there are eight hundred first-time jumpers that came to the town. On an average weekend, there are about four hundred jumpers and spectators, so it's jumpers and spectators together. The majority travel from out of town for the experience. So this brings, of course, the trickle-down that you would get with, you know, as part of local businesses, restaurants, food, fuel, tourism, et cetera, et cetera. And they reckon or they've averaged about two and a half spectators per jumper. We have Mobility Lab Incorporated. I'm sorry, that's a, it's a little bit difficult to read. It was supposed to fade out here, but. So they're a globally recognized and trusted parachute company. They have fifteen employees. Twelve employees are residents of our prior. They average two to three specialty military training courses a year, so over twenty, well over twenty personnel. Per course for specialized training and parachute jumps and in twenty twenty-one, so I don't have this year's figures, but in twenty twenty-one. They had spent over four hundred thousand dollars in meals and groceries locally. We have an aviation repair facility, an AMO, called Chapman Aviation, who also does flight training. Who began in nineteen eighty-six. He's transferred, transferred Canada crew, employ fortified full-time staff, all local. A full-service repair, maintenance and certification facility for aircraft. He also offers flight training for both land and sea planes. And the city tours. Pre-compliers at the airport, like my little bit mention of who likes to use the airport and how we benefit from them and how the town benefits from them. O P P for strategic operations, search and rescue, finding those lost loved ones that are being difficult to find. Frequently strategizing the terminal building. So we can walk in there, you can see O P P often gathered in the terminal building discussing how they intend to. Carry out the operations at hand. One example, in fact, I saw them a week and a half ago talking about a lost individual that was close in the area. And they had provided aerial support for this. We have Hydro One Networks doing system inspections and strategic maintenance, damage assessment, grid development. And just to give an example, during the last high wind event a few months ago, we had about four. Hydro One helicopters working around the clock, looking to see how to restore power to this area and to our neighbors. And of course, all sit and planning in the terminal making use of the facility as well. Ontario Ministry of National Resources does firefighting, environmental protection and wildlife management and also loves to use our fires or temporary base of operations when they're doing. Missions in the area, if you will. The latest example is we got a phone call in about about three weeks, about a month ago now from McNabb. Who asked whether or not we had any airplanes in the area. And we said, yeah, what's the problem? We, they said, we have a fire right near White Lake. There's no road access. I would like to know what's going on. So need some reconnaissance. So there was a plane about to take off. They got on the radio. They gave some information which was helpful and it ends up that they dispatched Ministry of Natural Resources over the next couple of days. With personnel that was dropped down into the area for access. Now, what they did with it, I didn't, I didn't ask, but it's certainly a resource. Last and certainly not least is Orange Air Ambulance. They routinely operate at Farm Prior. We've. For patient transfer and for emergency, you know, extrication or to, you know, move people to get the service that they need. When time is critical, I invite you all at least to think about what it would be like to have a family member that, you know, or a loved one that requires a critical care where the minutes count and the seconds count. Now, of course, there are definitely towns and cities that don't have the luxury of having an airport in their backyard. But we have it. If we were to start it from scratch, I think that it would, it would be outside of the reach of of. Of our current municipality, but we have it there and it does bring a huge value in terms of what it brings. To give an example, in the last, in the last week and a half, there has been three activities where this is, this was just taken last week. Where we have ambulance out on our apron and we have helicopters taking people to get the service they require and the that they need. Where we're heading snapshot, I would like to say that we're going to be certainly working for further commercial development in our allocated lots. So we have some lots that. The one side reaches Van Duzen. And the, sorry, Beth Shaw Park Bay and the and the other side, well, between the two. And the other one has a access to our decommissioned runway. So we have these commercial lots that are one acre in size that we're trying to find. Lease leases or to fill leases for. Private hangar development on the North Taxiway, I guess I don't have a map here to show you, but our taxiway effect of our main taxi runs pretty well north, south. And on the north side of it, there is a huge area to develop key hangers that we're looking at. And we're also looking to do, or I'm looking to to increase the amount of general aviation attraction, which would include, let's say, underwind transit camping. For those of you don't know, it's a, it's a thing to have planes show up with tourism, set up a tent underneath your, your. Underneath your wing, stay for the night, use local resources and and be on your way. You may or may not recall, I wanted to make you to make this a part of the presentation, but the time constraints didn't allow it. We used to have very involved flying breakfast a number of years ago before my time in the area. But twenty eleven, I believe, the Copa thirty three was one of the largest. Flying breakfast that had taken place. We had served, I believe, almost one thousand breakfasts. And this was not just for aviation. There was, there were certainly many planes that showed up, but by and large was locals who showed up. And we've gotten many, many questions about when is this coming back again and when can we get involved? So that's something I'd like to bring back and I'm making some strides in order to 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 bring this back. And I'd like to get our prior residents involved. So either via Copa thirty three or there's another organization called the Experimental Aviation Association. We have a chapter that's out of CARP, may very well be interested in working with us over our prior, where we can offer flights for use. Anyone who's interested in getting involved in aviation or want to know what it's like, I want to get exposed, they're free flights. And we take them up and hopefully get, you know, wet their appetite for for aviation. Challenges. Airport has many, but no capex. So capital expenditures, we really don't have a lot in the coffers for what kind of expenditure is this type of. This type of infrastructure required. So for instance, the runways are a big one. If we had to repave the entire runway set, we'd probably be into the billions. And we certainly don't have the coffers for that sort of thing. Operating expenses have increased, just like everywhere else. We're certainly no exception. We have. You know, not only has fuel gotten more expensive, so we kind of noticed that people want to fly a little bit less, but. There's also, you know, everything, the snow operating budget wants to increase. Everything that we have going on at the airport definitely just increased. Definitely a challenge as an environmental consideration. I think that I should, we can only talk about the good things of the airport. I have to at least acknowledge the fact that the airport must be seen as something that uses fossil fuels. We burn quite a lot of it. Both for the private guys and certainly for the commercial ones. I don't even want to put a number on it. It would be staggering to realize how much helicopters use and large aircraft. Now, we're not. You know, we're certainly not an exception and there are airports use a heck of a lot more, of course, you know, Ottawa and and things that have routine jets that come in. However, I feel that at least for what we can do moving forward, we're strategically placed, in my opinion, where we can. You may or may not have read that there's been some electrification of aircraft, at least for short-term use. In a small radius around an airport, we're well placed for that because of the amount of space that we have. If we were going to get into somebody who's interested in pursuing electrification, we have hydroelectricity right at our back doors. We don't have to worry about coal and the implications of these sorts of things. The possibilities are endless. So. I just wanted to touch on that, that yes, of course, it's something that that is a problem. However. It doesn't look like aviation is going away anytime soon, perhaps much to the dismay of some environmentalists. Aviation, in fact, right now is at a bit of a critical level where people are definitely looking for pilots. There's a huge shortage of pilots. And it's difficult to get them to get trained. So we also have that angle as well. What am I going to do about it? Personally, I'm going to say that I'm trying to cut labor costs. For the airport with regards to overhead, now that I've taken on management, that we don't have, our only full-time employee was our manager. Now that he's no longer, if I do any management work personally, I only charge by the hour. It's maybe we call some of your other present, presenters rather. That if you charge under thirty thousand dollars, you don't have to charge GST. I'm definitely in that bracket. So if whatever little I do for the airport on the management side, it's just an hourly charge, but save the airport quite a lot. It ends up that our management wasn't performing very well in the last year or so. And this way here was something that's certainly able to 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 reduce and you'll see that in the in the balance sheet that I've provided. And we're looking to increase the director workload. So we have, for those of you who don't know, there's six. Directors that are on the commission and I'd like all of them to maybe pick up the, pick up the pace a little bit so we can all contribute to the airport and take on tasks. So kind of have a dual role there. We're actually getting our hands dirty as well. I'd like, I'm going to implement, implement rather the first ever volunteer snow contract for the airport in order to cut costs as well. So I'd like to get a volunteer team. You guys probably recall, we purchased the truck from the town. We've got it running suitable for our needs. At least I hope we haven't pushed any snow with it yet, but I'm hoping that will be the case. We've got our hands on Snowblower, I believe, that used to actually work at the airport for a very, very reasonable price. So there's a couple of pieces of machinery that we're going to require moving forward, but if we can get enough guys together, we can really cut the snow, snow removal down. And I'm hoping also do a better job. There's been some complaints by some of the guys who've moved in that maneuvering spaces have been very slippery. And and I'm hoping that with what we got together and with our dedication that we'll do a better job. I'm personally trying to lead by example. I'm trying to do, you'll easily see me on there. As I said, I'd like to volunteer for snow, but all past, this past summer, I've been operating the tractor, doing, cutting the lawn, all volunteer. Crack filling, operating these propane melted. Anyway, I've been doing that for for many, many weekends. I'd like to increase fees for people that are there now. So this will, of course, help our bottom line. With regards to fueling, we currently have issues servicing transient users, which means, you know, people coming from elsewhere that wanted to slip a credit card and pay like they would at any other fuel pump. Our fuel system does not allow it. We're looking to make that change and I'm looking to at least get the increased revenues from that. And finally, with regards to accounting and bookkeeping, we have a system that, quite frankly. I have no positive words to use to describe it, but it's very difficult to work with, suffice to say. And I would like to to change this system in order to get to, first of all, help some transparency, but also to help a better analysis for how we can better keep our costs in line at the airport. What are you supporting and why? Well, the crux here, infrastructure. I know that this, the airport is not a piece of. An asset to the town of Arm Prior. However, I believe it's a de facto town asset in the sense that it exists because of the town. You guys have been supporting it for many decades. And and it's called the Arm Prior Airport. And although I would like to consider us an armsline, I very much want to strengthen relationships with the municipality so that we can all work together and just consider it a resource. The airport operator, which is the Empire Airport Commission, is volunteer. All of us do not get paid. So it's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, you don't have any to worry about salaries. You don't have to worry about anything that that entails. So it comes at very low cost for the for the town. Our land tax dollars translates to net positive for the town. So all of the taxes that come in that, as described before, via either private or leases. Are all, they come to the town and you certainly get more out of it in taxes than than, I I don't have the exact number, by the way. I looked to to obtain that number. I spoke with Oliver and he said that that's. I guess confidential information and I was able to. I'm able to get the information through NPAC and kind of come up with a number for this presentation, but I thought that it would probably be fudging some numbers anyway. So I think it's just suffice to say for what we're asking fifty five thousand versus what you get, definitely get more than than what we're asking. And in addition to the trickle down and direct benefits of, you know, to the local economy. Also, it's a minimum relative expense for the town. We don't have any sewers. There's no pipes to fix. There's no road maintenance, there road maintenance. No snow removal, which is certainly a big one, or street sweeping. We don't even have any lighting that you guys have to pay for. And and as I mentioned earlier, I think in terms of a piece of infrastructure, that airport. Starting from scratch would be unattainable if you're starting from zero, but right now you have it in your own backyard and and it would be. I'd like the council at least to consider the airport as in as an indispensable resource, simply for that matter, but it does provide a real, real tangible benefit to the town. And if that's not enough, I'd like to work together to sweeten the deal. If it wasn't sweetened up. We like to offer, I know that the town has been looking to get a dog park and has been in conversation for quite some time. We have quite a lot of land and we're willing to offer some as long as it doesn't affect our, the safety of airport operations to a dog park. We, there's a couple of spots that we had that have potentially that that can work. It really depend on your analysis and and your consideration. But we're willing to work with you on that for, you know, continued support for the town. And that's, that would conclude my meeting. Are there any questions?
I have a question, but it's it's more for Jennifer. Do we have an excellent idea of how much tax revenue we do receive from the hangers?
So from all the presentations tonight, we're all different councils. I'm going to combine all of it into a nice memo and have all the information and I'll definitely get them before you and I'll include them.
Last day, dog park.
Yeah.
You're willing to offer the land. Or have the ball of beers up there, go to look after it as well, or is that going to be an expense for the municipality?
I I would imagine that'd be, so what, let's give one example. Out of the end of Baskin Drive, there's a dock. There that's, there's a parking lot at the end that a lot of people might do some interesting activity because there's garbage and stuff around it. But if you look at that area, let's say you're cut out or carve out a one acre area for a dog park or whatever it is that you decide to work or we work together at. That would have to be fenced. That would have to be a municipal expense that we don't have the expense to fence that sort of thing. And I would imagine that the, it would be understood that the municipality would clean it, provide garbage, you know, that that sort of thing. We could probably take care of the snow for you. But outside of that, I mean, I don't think you're suggesting that be out there picking up, you know, what 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 remains may be there.
I.
Not not myself, anyway.
No, I'm not saying that. I I just have sort of mixed feelings on dog parks because for that very reason. Is town staff going to be expected to clean it up? And I don't think they should be.
Right.
So I think it should be anyone, users, user fees or users do it. I just, I just don't agree with that being put into the municipality for staff to have to.
That that's fair. I I just, I know that I've been watching at least. Not not a focused observation, but I have been looking for a while and I noticed that it has come up a few times, both on social media and also you guys have discussed it. So I think it's, if it's not on the agenda, at least it's, you can hear the drum beating that I think somebody wants a place. At least that's the, I guess, I'll leave that to you. This is your domain. But I'm just saying, if something that you want to work with, we're here to listen and help.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's a dog park. If we were to look at that, if that were an option, what kind of time? Because there's going to be investment for fencing for that kind of stuff. What kind of contract or what have you? How many years? Would you be interested in? If I, I mean, it's hard, it's difficult for me to answer that as, you know, definitively something because I, I. I've got, I have a unified voice, but I certainly have to speak for the commission and probably discuss first. But but I think we're open to anything, really. You know, there's a lot of land and the way an airport operates generally is that they, you need the space. For like with regards to expansion, it wouldn't be in the room of expansion. Should that ever be something down the line? And I believe that we're contractually obligated to operate as an airport if the commission is to remain. So for the, in the long term, we're hoping that this is going to be an airport. So. Listen, if if it helps the municipality, then we're here to work with you. And and I think that's, you know, if if it, if it helps, then. I'd be impressed. Well, you can't commit to it, but a long-term commitment wouldn't be off the. I'm not off the table at all. No. Okay. That's good. So I, I mean, I can speak, sorry, just to say, I had one more thing. I, we certainly talked about it with another couple of the directors in the commission. And in fact, it was one of the, their ideas to do this. They said, why don't we work with the town and and how to make this happen? So I, I really don't see any impediment to to work in long term, you know, twenty, thirty years. I mean, I, I, as I said, don't, don't hold on it, but I think it's definitely.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, just a comment. I certainly commend your efforts for trying to cut costs with the. By. I, you know, and also increasing the fees for the leaseholders. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's, I certainly commend you and and thank you for putting those efforts forward.
Well, thank you, Chris. I really appreciate that. And and it's, it's a long road and it's not a easy one, but I, I think if. At the right goal, I think we can all get out and it's, I really appreciate your.
Any other questions? Just a comment. Thank you, Johnny. I really look forward to the dog park. If it's okay with the airport commission, but the council is making a decision on regarding what we're doing and all the different rules, but thank you very much for the offer. See any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Next we have the Ontario.
Good evening, good worship and and chair. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to make a presentation this evening to you and to your staff and and your volunteers and your community. We are very proud of what we've been able to accomplish on behalf of the community. As as you're aware, the games were originally due to happen in March of this year, but. Covid forced us to make a decision last year, which was the right decision to delay. And the government in discussion allowed us to reschedule to this year, which is an off year. Normally it's a two-year break. So next year will be Thunder Bay in twenty twenty four. So with that, tonight, Cindy Erwold, she's Games Manager. She's been with us since. Pretty much since the start. We, Cindy or I did not submit the application to the provincial government. It was, it was presented by. A number of recreation directors across the county and county economic development and tourism department. And after the games were awarded, I was approached to chair it and then we turned hired Cindy. So Cindy's our only, our only employee. The rest of her are volunteers. So with that, just turn it over to Cindy.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks very much for giving us the time to present in. I think we did this this presentation about a year ago, almost to the day. This time we're feeling much more optimistic going forward that these games are actually going to happen. I I'm going to open just by reading this quote because I actually think it's pretty powerful that is by Nelson Mandela. So what isn't powerful by him, but sport has the power to change the world. It has the power to inspire. It has the power to unite people in a way that little else does. It speaks to youth in a language they understand. Sport can create hope whilst it was only despair. I'm just going to leave that with you, that thought, because we speak to that a lot going forward about the power of sport, about inspiring our youth and about unifying the whole Renford County and bringing our communities together, which is really why why our region actually bid on hosting these games. Just a little bit about what the Ontario Winter Games are. They began in nineteen seventy. They happen every two years and they are the largest multi-sport event in the province. We will see over three thousand athletes, coaches, managers and officials coming to our region for the two weeks of the games. Competing in twenty four different sporting events and that includes both able bodied and para sport. The athletes on average are aged about eleven to twenty, and this is their very first entry into elite competition. So this is kind of the first time that mom and dad are dropping them off and and waving to them. We take care of everything once they're left at our doorstep here in in our county. The parents are around from a support point of view and from a spectator's corner of view, but this is really for these young athletes, this is their first big entry into elite competition. And anything that sort of emulates Olympics, Pan Am Games, Canada Games, and that's it. So it's it's an exciting moment for them. And for a lot of them, it was a big disappointment that it didn't take place last year. The games are in fact owned. The model of the games are owned by the province. I I sort of think of us, we're a franchise that is executing the games on behalf of the province of Ontario. So it's the Ministry of Sports, Culture and Heritage. They provide the funding, the initial funding. They set up guidelines for us. They provide us with templates for previous games. And they, we work closely with them on a daily basis of overall management of the games. We provide the infrastructure. So our role as host of these games is to provide all the infrastructure that would be needed to host these games. The venues, the facilities, we have to seek out in some cases, some of the sport equipment, whether it's wrestling mats, karate mats or racing gates for any of the Alpine events. We provide the people that will help put that infrastructure together, the volunteers. We provide the accommodation. We provide the transportation and we provide the food for the athletes as well as gifting medals. All of that has to go into our budget. And so basically, as I said, the athletes come and we take care of them from there on in. What we don't do as an organizing committee is we do not select. We don't choose the age groups. We don't determine who will get to participate in these games. That is the provincial sport organization who makes that decision. And they also provide the actual officials that will be officiating any of the sports. We just pay for them. Peter pointed out, we have a committee that runs these games. We earn sixteen sixteen different chair roles. We actually added a chair roles. We're technically seventeen. We wanted a sustainability chair because we want to ensure that these are sustainable games and that the impact on our region is minimal, as minimal as we can possibly do. It is a hundred percent volunteer run. As Peter pointed out, I'm the only paid staff that's working on this that oversees it. My chairs work endless hours and have been for almost two years now because of the delay. And we're so excited that it's finally going to happen, but it it is an incredible accomplishment to think that the games of these magnitude is virtually done by a volunteer committee. In terms of Renford County, it's the first time it's been hosted here. And it's the first time that these games have in fact taken place over multiple communities and in rural villages across the region. In fact, it's probably the first time it's really been out of Southern Ontario. It's traditionally been in Aurelia, Toronto, Berry, Berry, London, that region. In fact, when we toured around with some of the sport reps are so excited to be able to actually go somewhere different than Southern Ontario all the time. So it is, it is the first time. It's never happened. We are literally in seventeen venues and nine communities. The biggest, the biggest region that I've had before was Barry, Aurelia. So imagine the distance between Barry and Aurelia versus the difference between Petawawa and Arcar. There's a big difference. So it's taking place over two weekends as well, which is unique. That's never happened before in these games. Typically, they happen over a three day weekend or potentially a four day weekend. But the sheer magnitude of the number of people coming and the number of hotel rooms that we can provide in our region, we just couldn't do it. So it had, we had to split it into two weekends. So we're virtually hosting two separate games with a group of athletes coming one weekend and then opening ceremonies and a group of athletes coming a second weekend with a second opening ceremonies. There are twenty four different sports. That's just a snapshot of them. It is a mix of sports that are traditional traditional snow sports such as skiing, snowboard, cross country skiing, curling, speed skating, sled hockey, ringette, but it's also a mix of sports that are, for whatever reason, in fact, when we think about it, I don't know why sports that are in a gym are some considered summer sports versus winter sports. There's really no rhyme or reason to that, but it is the Olympic model. So we have sports, a lot of martial arts, judo, karate, wushu. We have sports like wrestling and weightlifting, artistic swimming. So a lot of sports that we don't, you know, traditionally think of as winter sports, but for no other reason that that's been the model for the Olympics, I would think. That's a snapshot. I'm sorry, it doesn't come up very clearly on the screen there in this. I don't know why it's not quite the whole thing, but anyway. We, that's a snapshot of where we are across the county. So we are Berry's Bay, Deep River, all the way into Armpryor and every, and all the the major communities are basically along the Highway Seventeen corridor for the most part. We have a couple of sports that we had to move into Kanada and the Pines simply because we didn't have the infrastructure in our county to host those sports. And one of them is bowling, which has had to be hosted at Marigold Bowling because they need twenty four minimum lanes. And the other is speed skating and that is because they need an international sized ice to host the speed skating. So we couldn't host that there. Here, I'm going to pass the vision and mission to you.
Thank you. And so when I was asked by the warden and and some conversation with the minister about taking on the chair's role, I said, look, you have to know a little about me. I have a chip on my shoulder, quite frankly, and I think our community can do anything. We just sometimes don't have the confidence to do it. And so I said that, you know, that's going to be our approach. We can do anything complex. We can do, you know, artistic. We're good at what we do. We've got the volunteers. We've got the resources and we're going to show it. And so the the vision statement is quite, it's quite aggressive. It says to implement implemented winter games of such high quality that it becomes a gold standard for future games while promoting Renford counties of thriving, growing and diverse communities. So we wanted to say to our kids, even if you're not an athlete and you're going to be a future athlete, here are the opportunities for you. Here are twenty plus sports that might interest you. And we also wanted to to send a message to our volunteers. Our volunteers can do anything. We can think big and then start planning and do it and find the resources to do it. So that was the message we wanted to send. First to our our athletes, our soon to be athletes, and then also for our volunteers and to our community. And then secondly, we want to bring in economic development. You'll see a future slide that talks about the benefits of the county. Cindy mentioned the the two weekends part was we want to keep as much money in the county as possible. So that meant double booking rooms on both weekends. And and if we fell a little bit short of our volunteers, our numbers that we're looking for, we felt that we could double shift some of them. They have such a great time working for us that they want to back. And so and our mission statement is it's essentially showcases the county to all of Ontario. And the participants have a high quality memorable experience. We think we've got quality facilities and we've got friendly, helpful volunteer staff, and that's our common goal we're working towards. And so why the games, as I said, it was celebrating together as one big community and to generate community pride and spirits. Our community will take on other events. We've been approached about some other significant events. Once we wrap up. Engagement of all nineteen communities, which felt important that the county and the city have a good relationship and and of offensive, the walk-in, the presentation, we have a good, a great relationship as well. We want to make sure that all nineteen communities were a part of this and benefited from it. And we want to leave behind an important legacy. And you'll hear a little bit about our legacy project. Part of our the franchise is that we have to leave a hundred thousand in the budget to develop a legacy that's going to benefit the whole community. That's going to be sort of kind of tough, but we think we straddle that, straddle that razor blade and we have something we want to talk to. And as I mentioned, the economic boost to the region and we want to inspire and motivate our youth. So how do we measure our success? It's through the participant experience. We're going to be spending some time talking to participants. We're going to enlist all of our our mayors and county councillors to hit all the venues and ask questions and talk to people and act as the real ambassadors at all the venues. Dan may not be aware of that yet, but that's part of, part of the Peter plan. And sustainability, we, one of our donors, our sponsors is Aqua and they donated five thousand metal water bottles. So we'll be giving them to everybody, the volunteers and participants. So that's one of our sustainability initiatives. And we're going to try and get all of our packaged in in paper as opposed to plastic. We're going to, in essence, ban water bottles from from the sites as well. So those are the things that we're we're going to do. The visitor experience, we have a nap now that we're going to have online. So when people come in and they've got a couple of hours, they can can log in and find out some destinations in the county to go and look at and some experiences for them. Diversity and inclusion, again, we're, we're welcoming everybody and we're, and some of our our participants will have some mobility issues or or site issues. And that's part of it is to ensure that they have a, they have a pleasant time and a rewarding experience as well. And then the legacy project, we're going to talk to you about in a few minutes.
Games and numbers. So we anticipate about needing about seven hundred fifty volunteers. In reality, that could be as high as a thousand volunteers. It kind of depends on how many choose to do two weekends or just one, but we're still, that's, we've already, since since it was launched, the games about a year and a half ago, and we launched an online portal to register. We've had over six hundred people already signed up. And and so that's, that's without even them knowing what's going on or what was coming. So we're, we're feeling confident about that. We're working with the school boards across, across the county to, you know, get students engaged, get their their volunteer hours. It's so that, that's a a big part of it. We have a thousand managers and coaches. We have, I've talked a lot of this already. And we anticipate about five thousand visitors. So if you think there's twenty, two hundred athletes, the majority of them come with a couple of parents, maybe a grandparent, brother or sister. We know there will be some carpooling because we know they're coming from far distances. In some cases, we, we have it's flying from Thunder Bay. So they won't necessarily become a parent. If I got a call from a parent today who's looking to fight for Thunder Bay, so. And largely estimated a five million dollar economic impact on the region and across the county. We will be measuring that too. It's also a requirement of hosting these games that we actually measure the impact of it. Another sort of slightly different look at it is about, we're working at about twenty five hotels, so three thousand room nights, about twenty thousand meals. We're working with ten different bus companies. We, the the county bus companies actually, as everyone is well aware of the shortage of bus drivers. And the the local bus companies are, can't cover all of our needs for this. So we've had to go out and seek other bus companies to help us. And we hope to raise a minimum of about twenty five thousand dollars in merchandise producing for games. Budget overall. So this is an interesting one. It's really why we're here today. So Games Ontario, which is the ministry, basically gives a million dollars initially seed capital to host these games. And that was what was part of the original bid, which was done probably four or five years ago. And then that interesting thing called COVID landed in the middle of this. We know the impact of COVID has been massive inflation, increased food costs, et cetera, et cetera. So we have now anticipated our real budget, our real is going to be between one point eight two million dollars to host these games. Where do we get the revenue from it? As I said, it's about one, we pleaded to the Ontario government that one million was not going to cut it. And so they, last year, even before the games last year came through with up to an additional four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars to host these games. But keep in mind, by delaying one year, we we spent some money, obviously, in initial years. So we probably lost about a hundred thousand of money that's just gone because of postponing by one year. And then of that as well, we have a hundred thousand dollars that actually goes to a legacy fund. It doesn't have to be a hundred thousand, but somewhere in that range, we need to leave money for a legacy fund as well. So we have to make up a rather significant shortfall in sponsorship, in in kind donations, in in kind offer of facilities and different types of things. There's also participation fees, which interestingly enough has not moved, they have not, but that's the province supplies a small participation fee to all the athletes. To give you an example, for three days, each athlete pays a hundred and fifteen dollars for three nights accommodation, all their meals, gifting, all the officials, every, all the transportation. So it's a very minimal and it has not increased since, I think, twenty sixteen. So the the participation fees is minimal and we make up the shortfall through through sponsorships, donations and reach out to the community. We have an incredibly generous community. We have, of course, raised a subjective of four hundred to up to five hundred thousand that we would need to raise over and above the seed capital that the province provides. We've currently closed, at the time I submitted this document, which was now over two weeks ago, about two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and we had at that point about sixty five ready to sign. And I think forty of that has now been signed. We anticipate, and Peter will tell me I'm low here, but probably closer to fifty thousand dollars in donations that are coming through and we're in the process of talking to different companies. So we're well on our way and this is across our communities. It's been very generous, but we still have a gap to fill. We still are, you know, we're still looking to close about another hundred to two hundred thousand dollars to ensure that our our budget is met. Otherwise, we're going to be getting lots of cutting, but we're feeling really confident about that. We've been really active in the community. We have a donate button. And I think some of you may pervert the domos pizzas out there working for us. So the community's been extremely extraordinarily generous and we're now trying to cross that finish line with minimal with not a minimal, with an excess, because if we have any kind of an excess, of course, it's our legacy fund. It's only going back to support the community after this. And it's important to note that we are far exceeding any other games in history in terms of what we've raised from a sponsorship point of view. The, I think I was told Aurelia was what probably the next highest and they raised fifty thousand dollars. So we have a very generous community here, which which is is amazing when you think of the breadth and the size of this community, how they've come through. This is just some of the partners. Again, we've actually closed more partners since I submitted this document. But these are some of the partners we have on board. You see, the majority of them are local. You know, Rogers and Dejardins are two big sort of Canadian wide sponsors that are interested in our community and interested in having a visibility here, but for the most part, our sponsors are from our regional area. Peter can also speak to Renford, the town of Renford itself, which are not listed as a sponsor, but have come through in a big way.
Yeah, we, the town is is giving the Malloway Centre two weekends in a row, four point revenue and then not charging fees. And then we've also had staff time. We've added in a cross country skiing at the Malloway. So we had to brush a bunch of trails. So our staff have done that. They're also going to help out and host the VIP tent both weekends as well for the opening ceremony. So I, conservatively, I think our town's commitment has been in the neighborhood of about twenty five thousand. I promised them I thought I would keep it under thirty. So I've been working diligently to keep it under thirty. So that, you know, when we've had, it's been good response from from the town and and we're hopeful it will you know, we're, we're, we have Petawawa next and here's a Petawawa to talk to them as well.
So what's up in our car? That's what's relevant here is so we have two sports taking place in Armpryor. The decision of where sport is hosted is really awesome. We present opportunities to the provincial sport organizations who came and did a tour of all facilities. Tried to select the facilities that meet the most sense based on there was a club there. They had, they had the appropriate venue to host it. Thus, ringette is here in Armpryor, held at the Nick Smith Arena. Ringette is one of the biggest sports of the games. It also attracts probably the most parents, the most loyal parents who are coming along to it. We anticipate a hundred thirty athletes, ten coaches and managers, thirty one officials, thirty to forty volunteers would be working at the event. And I grossly estimated about five hundred spectators daily at the event. And again, ringette, because Armpryor has one of the strongest ringette programs in the region then, so it made sense to host that event here. And also a great facility for Nick Smith Arena. The other sport being held here is sport nobody's heard of, but is actually a spectacular sport, which is wushu. Someone has told me it is most similar to Kung Fu. There are two elements to wushu. One of them is performance and one of them is combative. I can't tell you more than that except it because it is quite fascinating to watch. It's a little bit like artistic gymnastics combined with martial arts. They are a really keen group. They actually want to host an event in the evening and invite the community out to come and watch it. They want to do a lot of things like it. So. It's going to be held at the at the high school, again, about a hundred and thirty athletes, a lot of bigger sports as well, twenty coaches, managers, eleven officials, thirty, forty volunteers.
Old school boards have been generous. They're not charging us the significant fees for the the schools that we're using. All of our events are free. Spectators can come and watch them for free if you want to feel them and accessible.
So what we have tried to do to offset the cost then is to get a sponsor of an event. So we have, for example. OPG has sponsored sled hockey, which is taking place in Petawawa. So it's kind of there. So we get. And that way it offsets, we don't need to charge the the public to get in if we have a sponsor that's covering it. We haven't got every sport concept covered yet, but for the majority of them, we do have bring out, we give a few other sports that. We're just trying to give some visibility to sponsors and not have to charge any additional fee. In terms of the local economic impact, we virtually are booking every hotel in the region in Armpryor. As just for the athletes and coaches, we are filling the quality in on the Galilee Centre. In fact, we have to do a bit of a juggle where we have athletes staying here, sometimes have to stay in Canada so that we can, you know, there's a bit of a juggle of rent for athletes have to bleed into Armpryor. And so. What we try to do is minimize the distance that anyone has to travel. The other hotels will be and motels, I haven't listed them all, but would be filled up with the with parents and and families. There's literally. Not enough hotels in the region for everybody once we fill them up with athletes. So. Every single hotel room will be filled in the region during those those two weekends. There's also, we are using local catering companies for the athlete meals. Again, we have the feed and breakfast, lunch and dinner. In a lot of cases, we're using that we're doing at Nick Smith Centre for the lunch and dinner and then bringing any local caterer who will assist with that. And then for so athletes that are staying here that don't have facility at. Visiting parents. So. I've grossly estimated that the impact of the region of specifically Armpryor would be about a hundred fifty thousand. That's based on hotel rooms and food, but I. I'm kind of guessing that it's it's a, I wouldn't say it's I pulled that out of a hat, but I did some some very quick math on that. I would actually estimate that's probably quite low on what the real economic impact will be. What are our challenges? Well, pandemic was a big one and postponing the games had a huge impact on our current budget. The sheer geography of these games, it's it's so massive. So you can imagine that the transportation costs with current fuel costs. The shortage of bus drivers, we're kind of at the mercy of bus companies to charge whatever they want because we have no negotiating power right now. So the sheer geography inflation, again, of course. There's also some donor and volunteer weariness. So, you know, we've been lucky so far. We have a lot of volunteers and donors are stepping up, but there's no question that. There is some weariness with respect to that and labor shortages across the board has had a huge impact on that. So. You know, for the catering companies, the bus companies, everything, it's been a huge impact on these games. So here's our request. It's not a big one. We really want the Nick Smith Centre. We'd love to have not have to pay a fee for the use of the Nick Smith Centre. And consider this as a form of sponsorship for the Ringette event. I I put a value of a profitably ten K. That was really based on last year's figures. We're not using both rinks this year. So I spoke to Graham before the event and. We'd be looking more. It's actually more about seventy five hundred dollars if we were to rent it and we're just, our request to you is just, could we please waive that fee? And have access to the Nick Smith Centre for the Ringette event for the duration of the games at no charge. Just final slide is the benefits. Well, the benefits of hosting these games is that, you know, our car is obviously part of the biggest sporting event. It's a promotion of our car to a wider community. It's engagement of your local population as volunteers, as hosts, as. As vendors, as store owners and restaurants. Promotion of all your venues and local tourism and then just generating pride and spirit in in our region and and just having the opportunity to be a part of these games. That's.
And we may we may reject you to some of the other things we've been asking and and we'll be is sandwich boards and heaters. The tall, specifically porking heaters, if you have those kinds of things, I'll be sending a note to the municipalities in the next little while. We need about twenty heaters. And I think I have five lined up right now just to by sussing around the communities. And so those kinds of things, sandwich boards, we have a lot of signage that we have. Very event, so we're wonderful, some side, some sandwich boards, inserting our side. So we'll send in a little shopping list in the next little while. And then one of the and. If you would consider also the the loan of one of your half tons and an employee or volunteer for a day. The two days before the event, before it starts February second and February ninth, we have to move a lot of stuff around the county, there's podiums and there's. Supplies to different venues. And one of the things we're trying to cut back on it and it's going to be difficult, I think, is to rent enough vehicles and put them with volunteers. And then we're a bit worried. Most of the rentals don't have snow tires. They're all season and you know, somebody driving an unknown vehicle to them, we're a little worried about our liability. So we're going to reject our partners to ask. And we think we're going to need about ten half tons. Or seven days of each week. And we're going to try and work it out if we can borrow a half ton and an employee and we'll provide a volunteer to help loading. To move some stuff around. So we're we're still sort of. Sussing that plan out. I'm doing a lot of driving the last little while, trying to look at fruits, trying to figure out times and and so is the logistics people as well. So. Those are the kinds of things we're going to be asking for. I know it's a cost. You know, but I. Sitting as a municipal councillor, I'd much rather have a cost that I can absorb as opposed to writing a check. So that's that's our way of trying to trying to sweeten deal for you. But that those are the kinds of things we'll be sending out as a shopping list in the next little while. And so we've had just, we've had great cooperation from your staff here, Graham and. And. And your staff have been awesome. We've had people in and out a number of times looking at the venue, the PSOs trying to, you know, and we move some things around and they've been most accommodating. So we can't say enough about your staff. Your your rec staff and then also your staff here under your C A O.
I just wanted to add to, we we sort of touched on the legacy project, but it's not really included in the presentation. I just wanted to explain. What we as a committee came up with because because the county is so big and how do you preferentially with the legacy project choose which county or which region is going to benefit from. From any money and and how to, you know, how to make sure that we touch everybody. So. We came up the idea of something called the Sport for All Fund and the idea is to remove barriers to participation in sport. So what we want to create is a fund, which ultimately will be an association or a foundation eventually, but. Is a long-term fund that would support every community across the county. To remove barriers to participation in sport and those barriers could be financial. So an athlete or a young child or whomever. Can afford. Ski equipment or hockey equipment, but is actually really good and can move on to the next letter. They could apply to the fund to get funding for that. I know sled hockey has just started up in this region here and in our power, you know, what about another team in another region if they want to apply to get the fund to get. Equipment to offer a new sport like sled hockey. Or in the case of Renfrew, where we put, we're putting in cross-country ski trails just for the event. Maybe they want to create something that offers cross-country skiing to the communities going forward. So that's the idea behind the fund. And it's also to provide infrastructure improvements because one of the things we noted in doing all the site visits a year ago. Is that a lot of the facilities in our county are not actually accessible, are not truly, truly accessible. So. Some have, you know, the Pembroke Curling Club as an example, spent money to make it accessible for wheelchairs to enter the facility, but they haven't made it accessible for someone to actually participate in sport. So there's no ramps to the rink. So. Brentford Curling Club was the opposite. You can actually get on the rink with a wheelchair, but they have no accessible bathrooms. So we couldn't host wheelchair curling anywhere in the county. There was not one. Curling rink in Renfrew County that was deemed to be accessible. That's just one example. So that is another thing that we want the fund to be able to be. Help our our region to be more inclusive of any athlete that wants to participate. And so. Literally any community individuals would be able to apply to this fund. So I just wanted to clarify that when we talk, we kept talking about this legacy, but I didn't really explain it in the presentation, but that was, that's really what it would be. And that's what our goal is. Is to ensure that we do have this money that we don't have to eat into the legacy fund to help offset any of. If we go over on the budget. Now I'm really done. Any questions? I promised I was going to be quick and short, but.
Questions. For any volunteers, local volunteers that still want to get involved, do they go to your website? Have they?
Yep, they can go right, RenfrewCounty2023.ca and click on Volunteer and it takes you right to the registration portal.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just wondering about any additional cost for like policing for traffic control? If we needed that, who would bear the cost of that? Would this value would?
So we have the the only real one we need policing and there's two things is one, the opening ceremonies, which will be hosted in Renfrew and. I'm not sure where that sits the budget here, but.
Oh, it's one of those things that I'm straddling a fence on, trying to figure out how to make it work. But yeah, it ultimately it's. It's going to be covered under our our Games Ontario or winter games budget. And some dark stormy night in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to have a conversation with our treasury department to see if there's some means of making that work.
So yeah, the really the the key area that we have is for the opening ceremony, like just traffic. Control because we have so many buses that will be leaving all at the same time. And then the other areas that we provide security in the hotels every night. So we have literally, so so we have a security budget, which in an essence, answer your question. And then we have, we have paid security that literally will be traveling around to hotels to make sure that.
Any other questions? Yes. Under slides, I know as you mentioned, all the motels and hotels, the night scent wasn't mentioned, but.
I know I I.
Just in the on the on the air to give everybody the same.
Sure.
Advertising per se. Home support has mobility vehicles. Have we reached out to them?
Sunshine Coach and a couple of them through the network and we've had some conversations here for. The struggle for them is they don't have the excess capacity. To take away from their their own business of the day and most of the events run from, you know, approximately nine in the morning until seven at night or six thirty. So. We're in the process of having more conversations, but most of them have said, yeah, I can't promise you because our. Our traffic flow was up and down or our client flow. Maybe, but don't count on us is kind of the message we're getting.
Just we have a home support and we have. A number of, I'll say a number of vehicles, but we have a number of vehicles that could be or should be available.
Excellent.
Then the last question was with accommodations under private. If you're a referee and you're only one person, could be bill of them in a person's house for the.
Technically, no. Again, this is not our rules. This is Games Ontario rules is that we need to provide a hotel. It has to be a billable. Type of venue. We are encouraging Airbnbs for family members that are coming along, but for the most part for the officials and that sort of thing, we are technically supposed to be putting.
Thank you. Can I just ask one, just out of curiosity, for our prior, we have the ringette. You said that you have about a hundred and seventy participants. Hundred and thirty. So. Are they each part of like a like a team already or or how are the teams selected? Is the province broken down into. Areas and play the best players from each?
Exactly. So it's, Ringette is actually unique and they have a really neat. Process actually, which I really liked is they are actually selecting kids and putting them on teams. So. You could have kids from Thunder Bay playing with kids from Armplor, playing with kids from my arm and and from Ottawa and putting them rather than. Selecting a regional team, they're selecting athletes and then mixing them all up, which I think is a really interesting idea because these kids are now getting a different experience of playing with different. Different kids and also with other coaches, but they're the only ones. Hockey, on the other hand, is going regional. So there's. The sub regional team, the GTA regional team, you know, the Eastern Ontario regional team and and. But again, because there's selection, these kids don't necessarily play together on a regular basis, but. But we have nothing to do with that. That is. How they're selected and how they're placed on teams is all the provincial sport organizations do that. We simply host them.
And the last question is. People that are issuing pizzas at the schools have to have the vulnerable lease check. As a new volunteer coming to the Ontario Games, do the volunteers have to have the lease check?
So we have, yes, in a nutshell, yes. Not everyone, our rule of thumb, and we have Brian Shutt as our, as next VP, he's our security chair. And we're working closely with the province on this. Anyone who is in regular contact with. Children. So all of our medical staff, our security staff, all of our sport management staff who's, you know, in around the facility has, they all have to ask.
So if you're working in traffic or if you're helping us with our.
Preparation.
Preparation, you don't have to because you're not in regular contact. So we tend to go through the organization and. And take a look at all the physicians that are out there and say, these are the ones. So I think. However, expected seven hundred fifty volunteers or a thousand volunteers, I think we're we're about one twenty here, one sixty.
No, more than that. It'll be closer to five hundred.
Okay. Yeah. And so we've tried to break who has to have that.
Fortunately, you can do it online now. It's a much quicker process. And we've also, we're trying to set up a process. So. A teacher who has a volunteer, you know, obviously has it for their day-to-day job. Or we have a process in place that we don't have, they don't, we're not required them to go get a second fund. So.
All good. Thank you Cindy. Thanks Peter.
So thank you. And just before we leave, I'd like to express my appreciation to Dan. He represents the community very well at County Council and asked a lot of good questions. Dan and I have served on a number of committees the last four years and in the next four years. A great asset for your community and its contribution to to the county and to the things that we do is very appreciated. So I just want to reassure you that you said the best and certainly appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks very much.
I know we did go to Toronto.
Yes.
Yes.
County Red Crew and we were well received.
Yes, we did. The County Red Crew did. Thank you.
Last but not least. Judy Kovas is journalist from the Seniors Active Living Centre.
Margie Gloss is contacts here. So thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about Senior Living Centre and. I believe most of you are aware of the SALT. Which is primarily located downtown with. Other venues where we also offer programming. Oh, it's on slideshow. It's in the advanced. Is there a way we can? And so for those of you, actually, I should have introduced myself because you may not know me, although you know SALT. So I'm the manager of community programs at Armpryor Regional Health. SALT is one of the programs that I manage and also oversee community assisted living program and the adult day program. Which are both located at the old building. And so SALT is a place for seniors to participate in social, educational, recreational programs. Is a partnership between the Ontario Ministry of Seniors and Accessibility, who is our main funder, Armpryor Regional Health, the town of Armpryor and the township. Of Lake Nap Grace Side where I was last evening to present as well. And we're also a member of the Older Adults. Centers Association of Ontario. And so, as I mentioned, our funding comes from the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility. Yearly, we have to apply for that funding and we receive a grant. We also follow the program guidelines. So within those guidelines, it is stipulated in the legislation, municipal support is required for the maintenance and operating cost of the SALT program. And is mandatory for us to actually have a SALT in Armpryor. And so for programs that were approved after two thousand and eight, which would have been our SALT. A minimum of twenty percent of the net annual cost to maintain and operate is required every funded year. That might be for some of you. And so our yearly fee for members is thirty-five dollars. We are, we have agreed that as of April first, our. Fee will increase to forty dollars a year. And if you wish to join the men shed, it's an extra twenty dollars a month for supplies. And so with membership, we have about three hundred and fifty people right now who are actively SALT members. You receive a little key card and you receive discounts at some local retailers in town. I think it's twenty percent off of white pine books and you also get rewards at the golf course, coffee shops. And I believe we've added a few more. I should have updated that slide. But so yeah, there's many advantages. It's a win-win for everybody. Get to shop local and. You know, get your programming and many free programs of SALT. Not every program has extra fees, but there are some that additional fees are required because we have to pay instructors. And we have a SALT advisory committee and Chris Toner sits on that committee. At this time, we have SALT staff, community representatives, someone from seniors at home. Townships, our prior regional health and members from our men shed. Let's get that one. Oh, there we go. So our program is very varied. Here you only see really a handful of what we do offer. We know that seniors throughout our community, we try and plan our programs depending on what they want. And some people are huge card players and they will show up for bridge, for cribbage, for euchre, for six-handed euchre. And others enjoy dominoes. We also have crafts, flower arranging, book clubs. We partner with the Empire Library. We offer shuffleboard out of the Jag in Brayside. What's been really popular, I guess, it's safe to say that pickleball is now sort of replaced dumba. It's really, really popular. It's difficult to keep up with places for us to offer that. And we also have a SWIFT program through the Next Miss Center. And seniors without walls, if you're aren't familiar with that, it really is a telephone service to connect seniors. To sports chats, to news. So people can all join basically on one party line. And so for those people who were affected during the pandemic, couldn't get out, that was a way to stay connected. That's just a few things there. There's our November calendar. And at the bottom, it just talks about men shed operates two days a week. On Neiman Drive and. That's it for now. Yeah. Local talent. So we always try and engage with locals. To offer programming, instruction, some of it in volunteer, but mostly we do pay our instructors. So the community garden has been a really interesting project. It was something that the our prior Brayside Seniors at Home. Took care of and they weren't able to maintain it. And so SALT. Is now looking after the community garden. It really needed a lot of TLC. It was a piece of property. It's part of the Galilee Centre and it was ours to cultivate, to look after, to find the gardeners. And really this past year it pissed off from just dry dirt and weeds to a real garden with elevated gardens for people who need. Accessibility that way to be able to garden and those projects were taken on by our man shed. And so right in the middle of town, this is really something for us to have. Other communities don't really have something like this. So it's very special. They give their excess produce to the food bank. And it, again, it gives that opportunity to be social, get to know your neighbors. And we know that gardening is just good for mental overall health. So we have different bands. Music is one of the most popular sessions at SALT. It was SALT band. We have our punk band, which is an ukulele band. Mostly made up of ladies and we have a summer runner circle that is just starting on Friday. We also look at special days like St. Patrick's Day to host music at SALT. And during the summertime, we have pre-sessions down the park. Deal them up. I'm sorry. Lose tonight because I'm. You're doing a great job. So I mentioned the euchre bridge and cribbage. There's been a lot of research done actually with bridge around healthy brain aging. And what they're saying is that when you provide a place for people to play cribbage and they're social, it actually. Has better effects on brain health. So there's a lot of interesting studies coming out right now about. Those things that are going to keep your mental sharpness and reasoning, your problem solving. Even patience when you have to wait and understand and learn a game. So these are things that seniors aren't afraid of and. They keep asking for more. Six-handed euchre, for example, and, and other games that we haven't heard of. I don't know what Mexican trained dominoes is, but it must be fun. And so participation Canada also supports regular physical activity as one of the nice to have for those who can afford it. But rather necessity of life. And that's been our goal at SALT to offer low cost or no cost programming. To seniors to remain active in their community, to be involved, to combat loneliness and isolation. We know that the research right now is telling us that people who are isolated. The health risk is that of smoking fifteen cigarettes a day. And so loneliness and isolation are two things that we really want to reduce to ensure that we have an age diverse community here. We received special grant funding to help some indigenous. Programming and we had people from, I have to get the name right. The Indigenous elders and knowledge keepers from the Circle of Turtle Lodge in Golden Lake. To provide some education around reconciliation this year. And this was called a blanket exercise. I'm not sure if anybody here is there, but there was a lot of people who attended that. Bus trips. We've had two in the past few months. Obviously COVID has been a damper on some of the travel. But we do have some guidelines in place. We do take advice from Renford County Public Health to ensure that everybody's as safe as possible. New programs for two thousand and twenty-three, Karen alluded to this as well. We partnered with the library for a tech savvy program. And so what this is, is funding for people that have little or no knowledge of technology. And we have purchased Chromebooks. So we have an instructor who'll provide eight weeks of instruction to these people. It's going to be sustainable in that the Chromebooks will live at the library and be signed out through them. So they will be keepers of technology. I mentioned the writing workshop. So that's something for people who want to try writing maybe their own bio. Or books. I'm not sure when that starts, but I believe it's January. We have different meditation acoustic song circles in Hego. I don't know if you've heard of Hego, but basically you're connecting to a travel. Someone who's doing a guided tour across the world in real time. And so you're watching them walk down the streets. And you can say, hey, tell me what you see. And they will speak back to you. That's something they offer. Hearing tests. Again, nobody wants to suffer hearing, hearing loss because we also know that that can affect how, how social people stay with their friends and family. Men shed. I'm sure everyone is aware. We have a wonderful men shed here. We have about thirty, thirty members right now and growing. The men shed, as I said, is two days a week. And so it's community-based, non-commercial, open to all men. And it's really something to see the support that they get from each other and to learn new skills, but you don't have to know woodworking. There's always something for people to do. And when we think about men getting together. The reality is many men don't have a lot of adult relationships and to have that support. Through retirement, loss of spouse, your health issues has been really helpful to see that support in community. And just some photos there of some of the projects, getting ready for the craft show. And some walking sticks. So that was interesting. It was through the children. What children's age. One again, that's right. The children, Renford County Children and Family Services. So teenagers came and made walking sticks. They learned how to carve. And their caregivers also came and did another section, another session just to, to get out, to be around other people. To be around other caregivers and supported by the men shed. This past year, we had a special grant actually for men shed and we were able to purchase a lot of equipment. As you can imagine, it's very expensive. To have woodworking materials and also the equipment needed to make things. Me too are looking for volunteers. We're very flexible, application form, vulnerable sector check to work at the SALT itself. And great orientation. We have just had two volunteers start. So we're starting to see people come back. Our budget. Let's see that clearer on your screen. And for our requests this year from the town, we are asking to maintain our in-kind donations of five thousand dollars and increase the dollar amount to fifteen thousand. Your total of twenty thousand dollars this year. You're seeing an increase in rent, instructor fees, just usual inflation that everyone else seems to be encountering right now. We have two part-time staff. And again, hopefully we're going to get more volunteers to help us out to maintain all the programs that we have run currently. So thank you. Last but not least.
Questions? One of your slides, you said that municipalities are mandated to, to pay, I guess, twenty percent?
Yes.
Of the operating budget? Does that equal what you're asking for?
Yes.
Expenses for sure. We've noticed since last year, like I said, the instructors' costs, but it is a requirement by the municipalities in order to have a SALT. A minimum of twenty percent in cash or in kind.
Other questions? Thanks, June. Appreciate it.
No problem.
No problem.
I think we're good.
Yes.
Just kind of reiterate on what I mentioned before, what I'll do for councils, I'll combine all of the requests from all of the organizations. Also some sort of memo format or something, council and it'll form part of, I'll make sure it forms part of the budget finder, part of the budget consideration for council to have that.
When you're making that chart, could you put last year's request so that we can? Do that comparison?
Yeah, I'll try to gather any information that the council wants to see, like competitors, partners, or something like that. So that's the information.
Thank you.
And if council has any questions about any of the presentations you saw tonight, that, that maybe you just think about after the fact. If you could funnel them through Jennifer to ask the organization the question and get an answer that she can then include in the memo, memo, or at least make sure all of the council hears the answer, that would, that would be appropriate as well.
So Jennifer, on your report, your findings, could you put, or will you put the? If everything was granted tonight, what the percentage would be for our tax rate to go up?
Absolutely.
Different options we can do, please.
I'll tell you what the one tax rate percentage is.
But just a thought on that too, because I was thinking that as everybody was asking for more. Our tax base is more this year too though. So I mean, there's also that balance as well, right?
Absolutely. And I think my council sees it in the combination with the whole budget.
Yeah.
It's in the whole picture, then it, it helps paint that whole picture for you.
Exactly. Because we have more tax dollars. So. It might not mean a percentage.
Any other questions for Jennifer's staff? Yes. Mayor.
Now, the, I, I understand there were some problems with streaming over to YouTube. Tonight, but this was recorded. The reason I'm asking is that some of the, I couldn't see the presentations that were being made on the screen. From my end, most of them seem to follow in sequence. Like I've got the agenda in their presentation, but the airport, for example. The airport doesn't have, I have their financials, but I don't have his presentation per se. So. I'm okay to watch it on YouTube if we're confident that it's going to be there. Otherwise, will there be? Can we get that slideshow from them?
Absolutely. So we'll, we'll make sure that the presentation which is being recorded right now gets posted. And we'll also make sure, Marie mentioned, that all presentations that came in just for tonight, we'll get attached to the minutes as well. So you'll have access to all of them.
Will the general public, if that is all, know?
They can go on.
They go online.
Any other questions? Uh, mayor? Contributory bylaw, please.
The file on number seven three four zero dash twenty-two being the bylaw confirms proceeding from the special meeting of council held on summer seven, twenty-two, needed is hereby enacted.
Who are? Councilor Burnett, Secretary, Councilor Cooper. All in favor? Hold if any. Carrie and the German, please.
That's the special meeting of council adjourned at eight four five.
Mover, Secretary, please. Counselor Grinced, Counselor Denal, in favor. Opposed. Carrie.